Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We start this evening's meeting off with the public hearing for the conditional use permit request from North Star Church, 9263 Ravenna Road, units A7 and A8. This opportunity to come forward and give your presentation to the community to describe what it is that you're looking for this evening.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Mike Lerner. I'm one of the founding members of North Star Church. We started the church in 2021, kind of at the beginning of the year, and held our first services in August of '21, actually at a chiropractor's office in Aurora. One of our members has a practice there and he allowed us to use that space. But we immediately started looking for a new space at that time as well and settled on the place that we're at now, Unit A8, and moved in November of 2021 and immediately started doing some renovations, painted, steam cleaned the entire warehouse, repainted it, carpeted it, put a stage in and immediate area in the back and set that up as our sanctuary. And we've been there since and it's served us really, really well. One of the things that we saw as we grew was that our children's ministry was what was really starting to struggle. When we were at the chiropractor's office, we started about 15 people averaging on Sundays with about seven kids. And when we moved to this space, we were growing quite rapidly. And right now, we're currently around 30, 35 adults on any given Sunday and averaging around 20 kids. So we had begun to look for some additional space about two years in and looked all over the place, couldn't really find anything. We then kind of stumbled on finding out that the unit next door was going to be opening up, Unit A7, and began to work with that landlord along with our current landlord, kind of reconfigured our leases so that they would align with each other. And then we took that unit over in January of this year and had made Unit A7 really our entire unit is just our kids ministry now. We have a youth room in there, we have a nursery, and we also have our children's ministry in the back. It's carpeted and painted and put some cabinets in and so forth as well. So I'd like to invite anybody here to come and see us on a Sunday morning sometime. You're always welcome. But that space has really, really served us well. This last year, we signed a two-year lease on both sides, and so we're now in those units through the end of next year. And then through a discussion with Lynn over the last several months, we found out that we really needed a conditional use permit and weren't aware of that when we moved in four years ago now. And so that's why we're here this evening. One of the things that we really tried to stress, and I'll just kind of leave it with this, is that we've really tried to kind of become a member of the community and really work towards establishing ourselves. That me. Sorry. Back up a little bit. Maybe just a talk.
Maybe that was it.
Maybe it's my phone. But we've established that we have our pastor's from India, and so we have several members of our church that are from India as well. And so we have set up missions that we work with, an organization over in India, the Indian Gospel League, that we support financially every year. On a national level, we support Samaritan's Purse for a number of disaster relief efforts and so forth. But locally, we've really aligned ourselves for the last three solid years now with the Twinsburg Hunger Center, I think it's now referred to as our community hunger center. And I'm very proud. Our little church has done a drive every year. It starts the first October through Thanksgiving. And we asked them that when they're out and about shopping, that they consider purchasing some food items, toiletry items, and Christmas toys and bring those in. And then we would make a kind of a big hall over there right before Thanksgiving and drop all that off. And we've now done that for the last three years. We've also supported them financially with a number of donations. And I would just say that over the last three and a half years or so, we've probably donated somewhere in the neighborhood of around $15,000 to that organization, and they do terrific work and really kind of goes right back into the community, to those underprivileged. So we really want to be a member of Twinsburg and be a member for quite some time, so.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing for the conditional use permit request to allow a religious institution in the I-1 intensive commercial and light industrial zone. This is the opportunity for members of the community to address this issue. If anybody would like to speak on this, either in favor or against, now is your opportunity to come forward. Anyone would like to come forward, now is the time. Seeing no one, the public hearing will be now closed. Mr. Lerner, if you'd just stay put there because we're going to go into the work session portion of the agenda, and the first item is the conditional use permit request, North Star Church, 9263 Ravenna Road, units A7 and A8. I mean, pretty much have shared. Lynn, is there anything else that you would like to share on this application for Planning Commission's consideration?
Well, I emphasized through the process of getting representatives here from the church that it's always a concern of Planning Commission that there's ample parking to support this type of use. And so it's been a big part of what we've worked on and just really locking down agreements between the other tenants, owners, and occupants for shared parking on Sundays.
Yeah, if I could speak to that. So we average about 23 cars on Sunday morning. Right now, currently, the way the bylaws are written for the condo community, we're allowed three spaces per face. So with our two units, we're allowed six parking spaces up along the front. We've gotten agreement letters from our two neighbors. Quite honestly, at 5:00 on Friday, that place is a ghost town all the way till Monday morning. So we have a ton of parking, actually. But we're allowed 12 spaces now. They've each agreed to let us use those spaces on Sunday morning. The center island area is sort of free for all. It's open to anybody. There's real no restrictions on that parking. So with that alone, I mean, we probably have spaces for up to 50 cars. So it's really not been an issue.
Yeah, I would assume that based on the majority of your use being on Sundays, that parking wouldn't be an issue. I would be surprised if that was. So was that, that was really the major?
That was the main thing from a zoning perspective, from the building department perspective. When we started this process, along with the conditional use permit, we realized there was no certificate of occupancy for the assembly group that was happening there. And so that's the submission that you got in the packet from the architect for establishing the basis for issuing a CFO for this assembly type use.
All right. Ed, any comments or questions?
No, sir.
Craig?
No, the parking was the only thing. It sounds like you have ample parking. Do you do any evening services that may?
We average about two to three meetings a month in the evenings from about 6:30 till 8:00 or 8:30, and that's about it. And they've actually said really any off-hours, we can utilize those spaces. But generally, we're not anywhere near that kind of car usage, maybe six, seven cars at a time. So total amount of time, quite honestly, we use that space is about maybe six hours a week. It's not very much.
Michael?
I've got it. Mr. Chairman, they've done their due diligence and the collaboration and work.
Thank you, Scott. Anything?
No, thank you.
All right. Ms. Lerner, if you want to have a seat, we'll get to you in the regular meeting portion this evening. The second work session item is the final site plan approval of Deer Run Apartments Clubhouse facility. The applicant could please come forward and give an overview of what you're looking for this evening.
Jason Baylor with Pain in Pain Builders here representing in-town management in the clubhouse proposed at Deer Run Apartments. And we're here returning after a couple of year hiatus. I think we're 2023?
Yep.
Last visit. And we've done considerable amount of development of the site improvement plan and very appreciative of Lynn's help to get this far, to be in front of you tonight with a very well-developed plan. And the intent of the project is really about five different working spaces that are part of the clubhouse. One, we've got a primary office and leasing center. They'll be consolidated into that space. It's kind of in the side of one of the units right now. We'll also have a gathering area for the benefit of the residents there as part of the ground floor. And then moving up to the second floor, we've got gym facility there and a model apartment for the units that are on-site and available. In addition to that, there's a pool facility again for the benefit of the residents, and so that'll be presented and discussed at a later time.
Thank you. The submissions really come a long way from the original, and there was quite a few comments and things. The last couple of weeks, you guys really must have been working hard. Lynn, I'm sure was cracking the whip, which is good.
She was working the hardest of all. So we're very appreciative of the city's help and guidance.
I see even a couple of comments on that I made to you last week have already even been incorporated into this plan, so I'm happy to see that. I don't think I have any other specific comments or questions. Ed, did you have anything?
No.
All right.
No, I don't.
Michael?
I just appreciated reading the nationwide permit. I've worked with Hezenziak in the civilian job for many, many years, so you see him telling you stood before Michael, used to work with Coast Guard. I've since transitioned out of civilian service. You know, lots of good work on this.
Thank you. Scott, anything?
No.
Lynn, anything else you want to share on this? I mean, they've taken care of landscape.
Yeah, this is a challenging site with, for them in terms of the rock being close to the surface, with the size of the site. You guys didn't get a copy of the geotechnical report, but that was done as well to cite the best location for the underground chamber and so on and so forth. And the attorney representing the project, Mr. Ockner, has, he and I have also been in constant communication over the last two weeks. And we've, I've met with the law director and he and I have looked at the documents for the covenants, the declarations, covenants, and easements, and are satisfied with what we have. So I think really we've managed to cross all our Ts and Is. We're just waiting for execution of the storm pipe easement at the rear of the property and the sign-off on between the property owners of the covenants document.
So there will be three conditions, those two that you just mentioned, the storm sewer easement being signed by all the parties and approved by the engineer, the declaration of the covenants restrictions and easement signed by all parties and approved by city planner, and then final engineering approval of the revised submittal by the engineering department. I had a couple of questions that I was still hoping to see answers for on the actual retaining wall for the height and material and things. I mean, from an aesthetic standpoint, that's really not our purview, but if it doesn't work, engineering won't approve it from a grading standpoint, so I have to go with the flow on that.
Two questions.
Yes.
Do we need to put any condition regarding the core of engineers authorization because they have some restrictions on tree cutting from April to September? I don't know if we need to. And my other question is for you guys, because I just, I reread this again. The authorization from cores until March 14, 2026, do you think that's going to be enough time to do what you guys need to do?
So we do. We're counting on this committee to give us the leeway to do so, but we need to impact that site before that timeline also is within the timeline. We'd have to get in there anyway to get to the, get there before the bats do. So the timing works out well, not a lot of room to spare, but if we can work out any nuts and bolts left on the approval process and get our approvals, we anticipate being able to get started with the vengeance.
Okay. Understood.
Staff's all over those conditions.
Okay, I figured as much. And bats everywhere. I dealt with it in the context of bridge construction.
Apparently, they don't, if they got the memo, they don't move in until April, and we have to be done by March anyway, so seems like we don't have a problem.
Right, I think you're good. So now I just, I saw the fact, the end date on that until 14 March of next year. I just don't know if that's going to be.
Thank you.
Or if you're going to have to go back to them for re-oth, which from my understanding, work in core projects, they usually do. So you answer my question.
Thank you.
All right, so we should be okay on that then? Okay. All right, so we're good on that then, Lynn?
And Mr. Ockner wants to add anything?
Well, I better add something since I had to get up. Hip replacement a month ago, so yeah. No, and.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah. Ben Ockner, O-C-K-N-E-R. With Burns, Ockner, and Greenberger, we're counsel for the project. I'm very grateful for the city and particularly Lynn working with us on this project. I think it's a project that the city wants. Members of city council said as much a while back when we were in for our conditional use permit. And it's been just very satisfying and rewarding working with you guys. The only glitch that we have run into, and it's one that we're going to work out one way or the other, is getting the neighboring property owner to the east to respond to a request for the stormwater easement. We're considering possible alternatives, but the best alternative is the one that we've been working on, and we've had contact with them. But it's kind of difficult to get their attention, so. But that's the only thing that's of any concern at this point.
Well, hopefully you'll get that worked out because you'll need that to move forward.
We do, yes.
That hopefully will happen in a timely manner for everybody. All right, thank you. Lynn, the third item on the work session is the zoning text amendments. If nobody has any issue, I think we'll just handle that in the regular meeting portion. That way, everybody who's here does not have to stay. Unless you would like to stay for that, you're more than welcome to, but you won't be required to.
It's going to be riveting.
Yeah. So 6:50, we're going to move into the regular meeting portion of the agenda. The first item is the approval of the August 18th, 2025 Planning Commission minutes. Does anybody have any comments or corrections to those minutes?
No.
Seeing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Second item is public participation, opportunity for members of the community to address Planning Commission. If anyone would like to speak, now is your time to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll move to item number three, which is the conditional use permit request by North Star Church. If the applicant could please come back up to the podium. Is there anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission at this time regarding your application?
No, I don't think so, other than I just want to thank Lynn for all her help till now as well. And I would also like to thank our architect that we consulted with over the last several months to help us get to this point and all the submittals that he did. So I want to thank Nate, but that's really it. And hopefully, hopefully everything is complete and you've got everything that you requested.
Ed, anything else?
No, sir.
Craig?
No, sir.
Michael?
No, sir.
Like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representatives, along with the submitted conditional use request and application for North Star Church, 9263 Ravenna Road, units A7 and A8, permanent parcel numbers 64-04079, 64-04080, and 64-08337, date stamped, I'm sorry, dated September 30th, 2025. I move that Planning Commission recommend to city council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a religious institution in the I-1 intensive commercial and light industrial zone. Second. Second by Craig. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
So you have a positive recommendation to city council, who will make the final determination on your request and the issuance of the conditional zoning certificate.
Great. Thank you all very, very much.
The next item is the final site plan request for the Deer Run Apartments Clubhouse facility. If the applicant could please come forward. Is there anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission regarding your application this evening?
No, sir. We appreciate the city's help in getting this far. Thank you.
Craig, anything else? Oh, I mean Ed, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Craig, anything else?
Nothing.
Michael?
No, sir.
Like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representatives, along with the submitted site plan, landscape plan, and support documentation for the Deer Run Apartments Clubhouse and Pool, 10031 Darrow Road, permanent parcel number 64-09679, date stamped received September 30th, 2025, with revisions, date stamped received October 9th, 13th, and 14th, 2025. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, storm sewer easement to be signed by all parties and approved by the city engineer. Two, declaration of covenants, restrictions, and easements to be signed by all parties and approved by the city planner. And three, final engineering approval of the revised submittal. Second. Second by Michael. A big mouthful there, sorry. Any discussion?
You said pool also. Is that all included in this? We didn't have any discussion over that.
Yeah, behind the, on the site plan, behind the building is the pool.
I thought I heard you was going to come back and talk about the pool.
So permitting with the health department for the pool, I mean, permitting for the pool is yet to come. The plant, from a planning standpoint, it's as presented. So the intent is to build a pool and develop the site as it's shown with the retaining wall and the pool deck and.
Yeah, they'll still require all the other approvals, building, health department and engineering on it, stormwater. They have the underground stormwater detention that's next to the pool underneath all that paving. There's a lot going on on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. You're okay?
I'm good.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Approval 4-0. You're ready to roll?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning text amendments. Lynn, you're up.
Okay. So you have a revised version of this that was sitting at your chair.
Yeah.
Just, I'm just going to jump to the end of page three. The revision is crossing out the data center definition. That will come back to you in a different document. Okay, so the first one is section 1108.03, prohibited uses. Planning staff is recommending the addition of the word metal to this prohibited use that reads stone crushing processes, nitrating processes, and ferrous and non-ferrous manufacturing processes. That's the current language. Ferrous and non-ferrous manufacturing processes. Like to add the word metal to the manufacturing processes because without it, it really just means you can't have any manufacturing processes. You can't have ferrous or non-ferrous.
Yeah.
This language is the exact language that was in the old code. I just recently had a local business call and say, hey, we create solder for soldering uses, and I'm reading that I can't do that based on this language. And so that's the reason for that sort of clarification. I'm going to call this one a clarification.
Seems to be good. Any comments or questions? All right.
It's not a change in use, it's just a clarification of what we're prohibiting.
You can read ferrous and non-ferrous, as being metal, but that's all right.
Yeah, but someone sees non-ferrous.
It's obvious now.
That's right.
Exactly.
It made it more obvious.
Well said. All right, go ahead.
The next one is regarding fencing. We currently have a 1 and 5/8 inch wide spacing requirement on our board-on-board fencing. We're asking for the 1 and 5/8 to be changed to 1 and 1/2 inch just because it's easier for people to grasp that dimension, and there are more products available in sort of a vinyl format at that dimension. The 1 and 5/8 seems to be in the novel, and I don't know why, but that's been, historically has been the dimension in the code. It's created problems for folks for decades and.
So 1 and 1/2 is just more of a, more of a standard by the 8 inch versus so.
This is a standard build, this 1/2 inch.
Exactly.
You went 1 and 1/2 inches.
You can buy fencing with that opening size right now, it's hard to find that 1 and 5/8s.
Yes.
Or it's a special one.
Because a 2 by 4 really isn't 2 inches wide.
Was an 8 inch.
Correct. Right.
Is what, part of the problem is 2 by 4 is not really 2 inches wide.
That's true. That's true.
All right, so it seems to be okay. Go ahead.
So then the next section is fencing in residential zones. This was rewritten in the new code, and it's stipulating that fences not taller than four feet, you can have those in the front yard. It's just more seen as decorative. That's been the way it was, that's the way it is. But then it says, okay, it can't be chain linked, that's always been the same rule. And this language says, and may have a maximum opacity of 50%. But I think what we really want this language to say is, and shall have a minimum opacity of 50%. It kind of twists your brain around a little bit trying to register what that.
So you're asking that you wanted to have some solidness to it.
Some less solidness.
But it has to have a minimum of 50%, like a double.
Actually, you want more air. Otherwise, it can be clear to 50.
Right, you want more open than you have closed.
Correct.
If you have a picket fence, they have to at least be spaced the same width as the picket itself.
Right.
Otherwise, those iron fences pass.
Exactly. Or if you want to have a split rail fence, you're able to, but if it's.
You can't go board-on-board.
Correct.
Right. Yeah.
Which is what you want. I think that's what's intended, but it was written, doesn't seem like it was written right through though.
Yeah, okay. No problems there.
Okay, and so then that happens again, if you go to page two, and so that section was fencing in residential zones, then item D mid-page, fencing in non-residential zones, we have the same change in the language from maximum to minimum opacity of 50%.
Okay.
So I'm skipping around here a little bit, but so this is one of the few things in this document that has any meat to it really, is number seven, the addition of item number seven. We get some requests every year for a privacy screen or a landscape feature to be deployed with fence panels, but it's not really being used to enclose anything. It's just used in association with a hot tub or a patio or again, some type of landscaping feature. We'd like to allow that. This adds a lot of confusion for staff and for residents in terms of, well, do we require a fence permit? What does that look like? How, do we just treat it like a fence? And so we said, well, let's call it out. We're not going to over-regulate it here, but let's definitively allow for someone to use. but let's definitively allow for someone to use the fencing as a free standing screen. And it has to follow all the rules of the fencing regulations except for the 1 and 5/8 slash 1 and 1/2 inch. It can be solid.
I got a quick question on that. So, on page two, you have 1-1 on the line three, line three of that paragraph, you have 1-109 decimal 02, parentheses, capital B, capital 1. If you go to page one of the packet you gave us, where it has general fence material and design standards, I'm basically saying, does that need to be a capital B, or is that a lowercase b? And is...
One of the two have to change.
And is this on page two relating back to this? I'm thinking it's a capital B, just looking at the...
The way the rest of it is.
Right.
Yeah, considering the next one below it is a capital C.
Right. And then there's a capital D under seven. And the only reason I ask is I know if this isn't addressed, somebody will say something on Facebook.
I'd have to go get the book to confirm that, so I can get it.
Well, you can make it so if it matches, I mean, I think it's more, it's like a clerical thing.
Yeah, it's more scripted.
But if it's a lowercase b there, then it's got to be a lowercase b under number seven.
Right.
I'm just putting on lawyer Michael.
Yeah. And I believe it's an uppercase just because...
I think that item seven is under C, fencing in residential zones.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
I think it's C7, so I'm not sure about the B, but I'll definitely check it.
Okay. That's what you're saying, it might not be in that same paragraph where the C is located.
Yeah, we don't see it.
So, it could be a little A up above it.
It could be a capital C, then 1, 2, 3, then under 3 is the ABC.
100% true.
Okay, I see you.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so, it's a clerical thing to verify so that item B and item seven have the same...
No substantive concerns at all.
Okay. But the actual wording and everything else in there, everyone's okay with, makes sense?
So, we've allowed, we've set 25 feet, so that's three panels.
That's the eight-foot panel.
And that's post, yeah.
And a post.
Yeah.
Okay. So, then the schedule of minimum required parking spaces. So, in the, in our prior code, we required two enclosed parking spaces per dwelling unit, meaning you were going to have a two-car garage, at least you were going to have, I don't even think a carport would qualify, but you're going to have a two-car garage. We would like to go back to that. Right now, the language is 1 and 1/2 spaces per dwelling unit, but they're not required to be enclosed. And the reason why I think it matters, not because there's all these vacant lots that we're going to build houses out at this point, but I don't think we really want people converting their garage to live in the areas and then parking cars in the driveway. What I've heard in various focus groups that we have while we were writing the code, people don't like cars parking in driveways. That was one of my firm takeaways from that activity.
Because hopefully have four cars and a two-car garage.
Well, in the context of accessory dwelling units, when we talked about that with the focus group, they didn't have an issue with the accessory dwelling unit, their issue was with additional cars parking in the driveway.
They're on the street.
Yeah, on the street or just anywhere. They, that...
So, this is changing it up to two, but they're still not required to be in...
They are required to be enclosed with what is proposed here.
Doesn't say that.
Two enclosed.
Oh, two, gosh, you mean that big red enclosed right there?
Yeah, that one.
Need my new glasses, not my makeup. Two enclosed per dwelling. Okay. I'm fine with that. Any issues?
It's above beyond, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so then...
Note number seven.
Yeah. Comprehensive sign permissions and standards. So, section of the code that deals with these various types of signs, banner, temporary banner signs, monument signs, wall, window signs. It doesn't distinguish between signage in a residential portion of a PUD and a commercial portion of a PUD. This, again, is more for clarity purposes than for anything. I'm asking that we add the table note seven, allowing for temporary banner, monument, post and panel sign, wall, awning, and window signs to be allowed with a sign permit in the PUD commercial development areas, but they are excluded in the detached and attached one-unit residential development areas. This is really more for clarity. At a glance, when you look at the sign ordinance, it looks like signs are not permitted in the commercial areas of the Ethan Screen PUD, so on Veil Drive essentially. Adding table note seven clarifies that.
Why above the box, it says vehicular use area signed four feet with a question mark?
That's...
Is that just a typo?
That's just a typo.
So, we're trying to allow these signs in the commercial part of a PUD, not in the residential part, basically is?
With a permit.
With a permit.
And that's all handled through the Building Department?
Well, it's actually handled through the Planning Department.
Through the Planning Department. What about Architecture Review Board?
And it goes to ARB review.
That's all other parts.
It's all part of another section. What happens in the PUD, when you do the PUD development agreement, you've identified this commercial area, this cluster home area, the single-family area, Deer Run, this multi-family area, so you have these different areas that were identified in the PUD, and those are also stipulated in the original development agreement. And it says in there that the commercial areas shall be treated as a C2 commercial area. So, by virtue of that, the signs are, I could argue that the signs are permitted in the C2 area of the Ethan Screen PUD. But there's no one in this building other than me that knows that that development agreement exists.
This will clarify that for everybody.
What I know and what other staff people know and what those that will come after me know, aren't it saying? And so, I think this needs to be in there for clarity purposes.
Any comments or questions or concerns on that?
My other question, it says we exclude, so we're not allowed to do for detached or attached for one-unit residential development areas. I guess, are there any two-unit residential development, I guess, is that...
That being...
I guess, I don't know what one unit means versus multi-unit.
In the cluster districts, we allow up to four units attached.
Okay, like sort of like condos kind of together?
But we would still call those attached one units.
Oh, they would be?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we weren't carving ourselves out and someone said, well, I have a four-unit one, I can put a sign up.
Right, well, you can see how this gets when you're writing this code.
Yeah. Okay, as long as that's covered, that was my other question.
You have to literally mean what you just wrote, because then again, somebody looks at it later and says, hmm, I don't think signs are permitted on Veil Drive. And that's the reason. We have a new zoning administrator position now that's also administering this code, and if she says, hey, we're not allowing signs in the commercial PUD, then I'm like, well, why do you think that? Oh, because it's not in this chart. Okay, well, we need to correct for that.
Then the only other question is table note seven, I guess there must be notes one through six.
There are, yeah. Yep, there, I wanted to bring forward a vehicular use area sign amendment, but I didn't get to it, so that note above the charts is a typo at this point for future, future text amendments.
All right, on to serving notice of order.
And so, this one is asking to add a commercial mail service to one of the ways we could deliver a violation notice, meaning FedEx probably. Certified mail is really dismal at this point, taking weeks.
The only thing I would ask on that is certified mail, or you're getting receipts on that and tracking.
We are.
We're just tracking, so, okay, just as long as there's the proof of tracking, I think it's, I don't think there's a need to add anything additional because it's implied. And who would send something without tracking anyway for something like this?
It would, it would really be something nominal or something we, for some reason, expected cooperation right out of the...
Right. No, I think this is good as it is. It makes, it gives you another tool.
It's another tool, that's exactly what we perceive it as. And then we've changed Building Department to Zoning Administrator.
True.
Because that's what we're doing now.
Okay. Any comments or questions or issues with staff?
So, I guess I would characterize these as essentially clarifications other than the fence to be used as a screening kind of mechanism.
Okay, then I guess I would like to make the following motion. I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council the miscellaneous zoning and development regulations proposed text amendments as submitted and discussed for the October 20th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Second. Second by Craig. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
All right, so you have a positive recommendation, Lynn, to go in front of City Council with this, convince them, the goodness of it. Mr. Barr, see any issues with any of this? From your perspective, I know you're only one of many. Okay. All right, so, most recommended 4.0 to City Council. All right. Thank you, Lynn, for going through, putting all that together as always. Next item, communications and miscellaneous. Mr. Barr, anything this evening?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Craig?
No, I don't have any.
Michael?
I know I made a kind of joking reference to Facebook earlier, but you all know how defensive I am and protective of Lynn and the work that this committee does and the work that council does. I've read comments about the data center issue, and I know it will probably come to us again, but I think what got lost in the fog on all those posts is that we are very deliberative as a Planning Commission, and we look at things on a case-by-case basis. That's point one, and if there's, we're not always going to look at it, we're going to look at everything on its facts, as lawyers would say. And then two, I noted there was a comment about, we did all this work on revising the code, rewriting the code, you would think that so-and-so would have, would have taken care of this. To that, I have two responses. One, there were tons of meetings about this revised code, there was public notice, there was plenty of opportunity for participation out there. If this was an issue back then on data center or anything like that, it could have brought up a lot earlier. So, it seems like it's very opportunistic, some of the complaints about data centers. And the other point is just, this is again, thanks Lynn, we're trying, nothing is perfect. If everything was perfect, there wouldn't be legislation at every council meeting, there wouldn't be legislation every session of the General Assembly or Congress. Things sometimes have to be tweaked, and I think it's done so in the spirit of improving things for the residents of the city. So, I just, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
I, we will have a meeting in November. I think we may have a concept plan in front of us for the downtown redevelopment site. If the data center applicant would like to come back to Planning Commission for further discussion, I won't have those on the same agenda, so we'll just... You'll get an email from me explaining how we'll handle that, but...
November 17th is the next.
Yeah. Thinking November 17th will be an opportunity to see a concept plan for the downtown site.
That's awesome. Anything else in the works?
I have a couple. Boyle Stutzman, the resident that has a rezoning on the ballot for November.
Issue 44.
Yeah. He has a pending site plan and conditional use permit. I don't, it's possible that makes its way onto our November agenda, maybe just for the conditional use permit part of that.
Oh, that, because there were some issues with how it was overlapping the property and how that was going to work.
We probably need to have the lot consolidation and the conditional use permit together.
Yeah.
And then, the site plan was essentially completed, but I don't see all of that happening in November, but possibly a portion of it could advance.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Need a motion to excuse absent members.
So, moved.
By Michael, a second.
I'll second.
By Craig, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes. Excused, excuse absent member. Seeing nothing else, we will adjourn this evening's meeting, 7:17.